This episode of the Bill and Kelly Show is brought to you by the Committee to Elect Andy Bozak for County Council.
Hello, my name is Andy Bozak and the video you are watching was paid for by the Committee to Elect Andy Bozak. I would like to remind you to please vote for Bozak on or before November 3rd. Thank you.
Hello and welcome to Bill and Kelly Show. Today, our guest is Andy Bozak who is running for, you could say reelection because he once held the seat of county councilman. And so we're going to visit with him today and talk about his campaign and his hopes of getting reelected. So, welcome to our show, Andy.
Thank you for having me today, Bill.
We're honored to have you on, honored to have you on. So why don't you, first of all, because Porter County is growing. I mean, this is one amazing thing, especially during the pandemic, as Kelly and I look outside the house here, a foundation is being dug every two days in our neighborhood alone. So there's a lot of people moving over from either Lake County or from Illinois. So why don't you do us a favor and tell us a bit about yourself for those people who may not be familiar with you and your past service? And then tell us how you got involved in county government.
Okay, and if I go too long, just throw something at me. I know you can't, but virtually throw something. So I was actually graduated from Chesterton High School in 2001. My wife and I are raising our four beautiful kids here in Burns Harbor, Indiana. I tried to mention them as much as possible because they love hearing their names on the radio or different interviews. Aiden is 13, my daughter Ava is 12, and my other daughter Abriella is seven, and my son Adley is three. So I've got three of them in the Doombin School system now, or we do. My wife Roseanne is on the Burns Harbor Town Council, and so we do still active. I'm actually a current member of the Burns Harbor Plan Commission. A little bit on how I got started into politics, and I'll tell you kind of where I've been. I had a neighbor and he came over to me, came over to my house one day. He was on the park board of Burns Harbor. And he said, Andy, you know, do you, would you be interested in filling a Republican seat on the, the park board? I said, I don't know, you know, it's scary stuff. Getting, putting my name out there, I'll give it a shot. All right, let's check it out and see what we can do. Park's probably a block and a half from my house here, so it's really nice. Or one of the parks, one of the bigger parks in Burns Harbor. So I joined the park board. Actually, I was appointed by the town council at the time. And I got on and it was awesome. I mean, we were doing different events. We started a 5K. We actually started multiple 5K events, one for Halloween, and we did different things with children for Easter. We had a special needs event where there was, you know, kids could with special problems couldn't see, we had a different way they could go ahead and get Easter eggs. Kids that were in wheelchairs, they could, they could get their Easter eggs with a little magnet and a pole. There was kids that had, were scared of loud sounds, so we had a quiet room and just different things like that. We had an older park. One of our playsets was probably, I want to say early 90s, maybe a little, little, little after that. It was a fun playground, you know, the old playgrounds when we were younger were a lot more fun than today because they were more dangerous. Little more scare factor. Yeah, exactly. And those were the best ones, the big slides. So anyways, this park had kind of, or the equipment had kind of gotten beaten up over the years, which is a natural wear and tear and kids playing on it. And what had happened is we couldn't replace some of the parts because they weren't made anymore. So we needed a new park. We approached the town council and the town council said, well, we don't have the money for it. That makes sense. I get it. I'm not in your shoes, so take your word for it. The next year, there was a town council member or two that decided not to run for reelection. So I said, oh, let's see if I get my name in this and see if I can help out and help the parks by getting elected to the town council. Ran for town council and it was, it was a fun time. I mean, just being part of the election process, getting involved, getting to meet people in Burns Harbor, you know, I'd always kind of been involved in the community in different ways. I coached my son's softball baseball team and different things like that. I do wedding photography, also a wedding photography studio. So I knew people, but I didn't know a lot of them. So get on the council, or excuse me, run for council, got an opportunity to meet all these people, and then I won the seat. Now, once I was on the council, we worked with the park board to invest $100,000 into the park. And we were able to put new equipment up and it's actually there now. It's been up for a few years. It's beautiful. All ADA compliant, new basketball courts, things like that, that we're able, we were able to get done right then. So I saw that I was able to make a difference and I was able to get involved and have an impact. And I saw a problem and I was able to fix it. I didn't just sit there and complain about it. That's something I've always taught my kids, you know, you can't, you can't always fix the problem, but you should get involved and see what you can do to help fix the problem or help rectify what's going on. So I did that and then the year after that, Jim Biggs had one commissioner's seat. So it opened the seat up on, on the county council and the way that's filled is through a caucus. Pretty much the committee heads of the, I can't think of the exact term of what they're called, the guys that do the voting, but the the precinct committee, yes. So they get together and they vote. I want to say there was probably 30, 35 people there at this meeting and there was three people running. I threw my name in the hat thinking, hey, I'll give it a shot, see if I can help out in more ways than just the town and help out with the county. And got through the first round and pretty excited about that. And then came the second round and I won. And I'll tell you, that was, that was cloud nine right there. I mean, you know, it was just such an exciting feeling to know that I was going to be able to go out and help the whole county. I'm not going to say it's as good as my wedding day or having, having four kids or anything like that, but it was, it was, it was very exciting. So I got on the county council and I served for two years. My second year, I was voted in as the chairman, the president of the county council. So I got to handle all those roles and I'll tell you, I didn't know what to expect with that. It was very exciting. But it was a lot. It was a lot on my plate. One of the first things I did then in that meeting, or excuse me, once I won was to email every single department head, every single judge, every single person that had decision-making power inside the government and let them know, I'd like to meet with you guys. I want to sit down one-on-one and I know there's a lot of department heads. There's a lot more than I thought there was, as a matter of fact. So it took a while to do it, but I sat down, I either went to them and met with them or we met at a restaurant or, you know, we talked on the phone and decided or tried to see where they were going, what, what their plan was with their department, their long-term goals, where are you spending the money? Because the county council, I'm not, I'm sure you know this. I'm not sure if all the viewers know it. The county council is in charge of all the money for the county. So the commissioners are kind of, there's three commissioners and they're quote unquote mayors of the county, but you have seven council members and they're the, the financial. We, we did the budgets. We approved all the budgets, any transfers, anytime the sheriff needed more money or the highway department needed more money or there's a new hire. That was all coming before us. It's a check and balance. I love it. I mean, it's a great system. It just, it works really well. So anyways, that, this was 2018. I was the president, ran an election, hoping to get back into it as district one. And I lost that election. It was 18,000 votes cast. I lost by 15 votes. So I wasn't really upset. I mean, it stinks to lose, but I mean, I was close and the person I lost to is, has been on the council for many years. Had served in that position as a well-known name. So, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't kicking myself. So anyways, this year I decided, you know, there was Jeff Larson was stepping down because he was trying to run for commissioner at the time. I figured we needed to make sure that we hold that conservative voice on the council. So I put my name in the hat and said, you know, I didn't just throw my name in the hat. I decided, talked to my family. I mean, we decided we're going to do this because, I mean, I'm not running alone. Obviously it impacts my kids and impacts my wife. So it was a decision we made as a family that we thought was the right move in different ways that I can help and get involved. So that's kind of my history, what I've been doing. As I mentioned, I've been on the Plan Commission, the Park Board, the RDC. I served on NICD, which is the South Shore Board. I served on the chaired Ethics Commission for Porter Lake and La Porte Counties. So I do have some involvement. Obviously I have the, the passion to do it, or I hope by the end of this interview, you'll see that I have the passion to do it. Full-time job, Director of Operations at a trucking company here in Chesterton, Indiana, Reliable Transportation. And then, as I mentioned, I do wedding photography and family portraits as well, just mainly a lot more weddings and family portraits through my photo studio, AB Photo Shot Photography.
Awesome. So awesome. So you're highly involved in the community. So, and you mentioned it in your discussion about how you get involved in the commissioner. The commissioners have the operational budget and, well, excuse me, the, the council has the operational budget. And so you're responsible for funding the departments in their day-to-day activities, their staffing and so on. So can you describe as a, if you are elected as a council member, your view of the existing budget, number one, and number two, if you are reelected, how do you intend to support that existing budget or is there anything that you would like to see tweaked?
Well, it's hard to say not being in the seat this year. I don't know if you've sat through a budget session before. It's usually over a couple of weeks, three, four weeks and multiple meetings throughout the week to meet with each department head. So there's a lot more information that I just not privy to because I'm not at all those meetings. So it's really hard to say what I would change in it right now. I can tell you based on what I know, the council's done a good job holding the line. You know, there was, they, they try to keep budgets exactly where they were the past year. They told department heads, you know, we're not looking for increased budgets. I think they hired one new person, but they were on a hiring freeze, which was all things that I think made sense during the year of COVID 2019 or 2020. Because nobody knows what the heck's going on right now or where we're going to be next year. So it's important that we stay conservative. They've, they've done a really good job keeping that budget as low as possible. There's always going to, anytime you deal with a government unit, especially such a large one, there's always going to be some different fluff in different departments that they've slowly built up over years. And those are things that you got to look at. I know they, they had attacked that a little bit this year. It's something that I think if, if we're, you know, continuing on this COVID, either way, we need to be continuing to look at where that is. And when I say fluff, it's not always a bad thing. I found a few years ago, as I mentioned, I met with all the department heads, that one of our departments was saving up for new computer system or new software for the computer. And when I found out about it, it was like, well, doesn't it make more sense to do that now? Because you're saving, yeah, and that's wonderful, but in the long run, you're costing us more money because of the inefficiencies that we're doing. So it's things like that. It's, you know, as far as the budget goes, it really comes down to communicating with your department heads, talking to them and seeing what they need and picking through different, you know, line items on the budget. It can be real tedious, but it's something I enjoy doing. I enjoy talking to people. I enjoy working with them and seeing what their goals are. So, you know, I don't have anything that I'm coming into and saying, we need to cut this budget or we need to add money to this budget because I haven't been involved in the last two years. It's just been kind of what I've heard in the papers and what I've talked to, because I'm friends with everyone on the council still. You know, what I've heard from them. So, you know, I'm definitely going to go in there with a conservative view, not only because that's my normal views, but because of the COVID and I don't know what it's going to be like in 2021. You don't know what taxes you're going to have coming in. You know, Burns Harbor is worried because Arshon Middle just sold. And, you know, that could bring the valuation of that property down, which would raise our property taxes, especially here in Burns Harbor. But that, that would affect countywide. So there's, there's a lot of things going on right now that it's just really hard to say, man, I would cut this budget until you, until you really are in that seat and have an opportunity to talk to the different people involved.
But your view, you're coming at it from a conservative angle. You are wanting to make sure that, that people are not overspending and they're being judicious and looking at expenses or bringing new people on. You're going to be there to be that check and balance and to make sure that they take it one step further and think this situation through. And if they need to spend, like you said, that they're not holding back to, at the expense of being more efficient. And like you said, with a computer system. Now, with that regard, with the budget, one thing that drives the budget, you know, you have to have a tax base. And what supports that tax base is an economic development plan in the county. Now, and I said this before, and you know, as I open the door and walk outside our house, you know, I see every day or every other day, there's a new foundation in our neighborhood, which is a good indication. They're all being sold very quickly, which means there is economics growth in this community in Porter County. In the pandemic, that's really unheard of because a lot of other communities and counties have come to a screeching halt. So you, your view as a council member and, and supporting commissioners are really, that's their charge to create an economic growth. But you as a council member, what are your views about keeping that economic growth happening? And is there anything that the county could do differently to create even more economic growth?
Well, I, you know, like you mentioned, that's mainly a commissioner role. So there's not anything that I can, I really don't want to talk about what I would do if I were them, but unless that's what you're asking me. But what, what I would do as a council is continue investing in our roads, our infrastructure, continue to, to invest in our, our safety. You know, our police officers, our sheriff's department, continue to keep, keep things moving forward. You know, a lot of those, those developments that are going on, not a lot, but some of the developments going on are in actual Porter County unincorporated areas, which are our roads. And, you know, you got to have good roads out there because that's important. Obviously you got to have safe schools. You have to have good schools. And I think that's why we're seeing the good development that we are here in Porter County. Because I know we're seeing it here in Burns Harbor as well. We've got good schools. We've got people that care. We've got people that are taking care of our roads. And I mean, I, I don't want to speak for other people, but I think we've got a really, really good police department in, in our county, all of them. Fire departments and just safety services in general, I think is, is pretty positive. I'm not going to say it's perfect because nobody's perfect and you should always be striving to be better. And, you know, I haven't had an opportunity to sit down with the sheriff and see what his needs are in this upcoming year. Obviously he did that with the current council members. But I would like to know, you know, do they need more money for, for any training opportunities that may come up? Especially with all these different protests and riots and stuff that are going on. And no one knows what's going to happen after November 3rd, you know, Democrat, Republican, doesn't matter who wins. I'm sure there's going to be a shakeup and we need to be prepared for that. And I know our police officers here are great and they're, they're well-trained already, but more training never hurts.
No, and with that, I'm going to segue into a question because it does involve the sheriff, which I've always, hats off to this county for having such a great sheriff and he's nationally known and serves on many committees. But he also rides hard over a problem that even pre-COVID was the number one problem in Porter County. And unfortunately that because of this economic growth and there being a lot of money generated in the Valparaiso area, what follows that usually unfortunately with a lot of communities is a substance abuse problem. And Porter County has been wrestling with this problem for ages, having a large overdose death rate in the county that has actually led the tri-county area per capita. And I know Sheriff Reynolds has created a marvelous programs to deal with that in the jail. And, but what I'd like to hear from you particularly is what as you, as a council member, your view is in supporting those departments, those judicial and law enforcement to make sure they're continuing on with this, fighting this issue?
I don't think there's a person in Porter County or maybe in the world or in the United States that hasn't been impacted by the narcotics and the overdoses. I mean, we were, I was just talking to a guy at work today about, you know, our 20-year reunion is coming up next year. How many kids have we lost from overdoses? And I mean, we're going down the list and I was like, oh my goodness, you know, people I totally forgot. And, you know, it's horrible and it's directly impacted my family's life. And so it's something that I'm very, very, feel very strongly on, that we need to do something. I'm not the right guy to tell you what that is because I don't know. If I had that magic pill and said, hey, we can get rid of this problem. This is what we need to do, then I'd probably run in for sheriff. I'm just joking about that.
But, but you, but you identify with that problem and, and my daughter's your age and the same with her class in Valparaiso. They've lost a lot of friends and, and, but to, you know, it, but as a council member, what are your feelings about working with the sheriff and working with Gary German's department to make sure, and the judicial department to make sure that those efforts are continued?
Well, one of the things when I was on the council previously, I, I served on the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. And that was under Judge Mary Harper. And so we were trying to work at attacking a number of problems, but that was one of the problems with kids under 18. I also worked with the coroner at the time to address, because he was very, very into that, going out and speaking to schools and trying to address it, Chuck Harris. And, you know, I, I feel the same way now. You know, Gary, Sheriff Reynolds, they, they're very involved. So I guess I would be always available to talk to them. I'm always available to talk to anybody that wants to talk, but always available to talk to them to find out what their ideas are, where do they need help, where do they need funding? Where can Andy Bozak actually make an impact and help that problem? Do you need me, you know, I don't mind going to speak to schools or tell some of the problems that I've gone through or issue. I mean, 37 years old this year. So, I mean, I've seen a lot of different things and, and, you know, I talked to a lot of different things. And I've got, as I mentioned on the beginning of this, four young kids. And that's a very, very scary thought to think, you know, that it was this bad when we were younger and it seems to only be getting worse. And as you mentioned, it's kind of brushed under the rug this year because there's so much going on with COVID. There's so much going on nationally with the election and everything else. So I think it needs to be brought back to the forefront. And it's something that's got to be talked about and we got to figure out the best solution that we can come up with together as a team. Because I don't think any one person has that answer. It's going to be a lot of people collaborating to make, making an impact.
Yeah, no, and I'll be first tell you, we had Sheriff Reynolds and Gary German on the show here about a month ago or so. And I asked the question, so where are the deaths? Because, you know, people are constantly worried about the COVID-19 deaths that are happening in the county. And they both quickly responded, oh, the, we're still losing more people due to drug overdose. And, and at that point, just like the day before, they were informed of one and, and they both, yeah, and they both grieve. And that's, that, that's, you know, they just take it to heart and that's what Gary ran his campaign on, is to help with this problem. So getting
Can I mention one thing with that?
Go right ahead, go right.
One thing I think that's really important is that we're looking to actually address the problem and not just put people in jail. And I, I think that's the tactic they've taken the last couple of years and I like that. You know, where, where, what do we do with these people to help them? Not to just lock them up and concede, concede that recidivism rate, keep, they keep getting back into jail. So I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I just wanted to go back and make sure that I touched on that myself.
No, you're exactly, no, no, that hit right on because they, that's both it because there are now problem-solving courts, both for veterans, people who are, and identifying people who are actually pushing the drugs and the users and making sure that those users get help and making sure that those drug pushers are held accountable for damaging our community. So, yeah, and, and that's the, from what I understand, that's their philosophy, the operational philosophy. And boy, I tell you, they have the toughest jobs in the county.
And thankless jobs almost all the time.
Yeah, and so, yeah, because with COVID now, the whole dealing with the, I, it's one of those things where you, I read, my hats off to any elected official or anyone servicing the community, first responders. We just can't wait for 2020 to be over. It's, as a taxpayer and a citizen, it just is, oh boy. So let's talk about, more about you and your philosophy. I want you to put yourself into a voter's shoes right now and they haven't voted yet. They're either going to early vote or going to vote on election day. Can you tell our viewers and listeners out there what your, number one, what your values are, what your philosophy is and why they should vote for Andy Bozak?
Well, I guess if I was a voter, one of the things that I would be happy to hear about Andy Bozak would be he's, he's open to talk to anybody. I'm not afraid, you know, if I'm having a problem with somebody to pick up the phone or to answer their call. And I know some elected officials do hide from confrontation. I'd rather solve it. I mentioned earlier, I think I mentioned, I give out my cell phone number. That's my personal solid. It's 219-508-7152. You guys can call me anytime, questions, comments, texts, Andy, you just suck, whatever you got to say. You know, but I think it's important to be able to reach your elected officials and, and to know that when you do, even if it's not a job that per se the council does, if it's a county-related activity, or even if it's not sometimes. I've actually called downstate on behalf of a few people before, that I work to solve the problem or work to get you an answer. It might not be the right answer that you wanted to hear, but it's, it's, it's an answer that hopefully satisfies the curiosity or the problem that you're having. Another thing that I'm very good at is, is dealing with people and just talking. I mean, I'm not trying to sound egotistical when I say that, but I enjoy talking to people. I enjoy, as I mentioned, meeting department heads or constituents of voters and, and that's something that's important. You know, as, as hopefully an elected official next year, I wouldn't be just reelected by Democrats or Republicans or this people or that people. I'm elected by everybody in the county. And that includes, you know, people that I represent that are under 18, you know, because they might not be voters yet, but you still represent them. So you need to be accessible. You need to be, have a strong head on your shoulders to go out there and deal with problems as you see them. That's one thing I'm really, why I was promoted at work, because when I see a problem at, at the job, I, I address it right then and there. And my boss always said, I think you do a good job at that. As I mentioned, I have conservative beliefs. I think most of the people on the council right now do. I know, I know all of them, good people and, and they, they do hold the line with things. You know, and, and I think I'm going to continue down that path as, as, you know, ask questions. If somebody needs $100,000 for something, why? And, and that's one of the things that I dealt with right before I left. The sheriff was asking for a body scanner. He came before us. It was the president of the council. He's sitting down and he's like, I need a body scanner. It's, well, this costs a lot of money and we don't have that. And my first initial thought is, no, no. We bought a lot of things for the sheriff's department this year. We don't have the money. But then he explained why and he showed us facts on, this was snuck in, this was snuck in, this was snuck in. I asked him, I said, how's all this stuff stuck in? And some of it was inside people, which was scary as heck. So it made sense, you know, and we ended up passing it because it made sense. It not only protected the jailers and everybody that's working inside the prison, but it protected the other inmates. It protected the other people in there. And so we were able to do something like that and, and work for that. So I think it's very important to do, continue to talk to people, work with people, be accessible and just do what's right for the county. One of the best pieces of advice, and I've said it on a few different interviews, so I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but it's really, it's, it's a wonderful advice. Jim Biggs told me, I said, Andy, before I decided to put my name in the hat for the county council, he said, Andy, so we're sitting down having coffee, he goes, don't ever do anything that you're going to wake up the next morning and you're going to see a newspaper article. Your kids will be sitting down and they'll be eating their, their cereal and they're going to read that paper and they're going to be embarrassed of you. And I thought, wow, that's a really good way to word it. Every decision I make should not only make my kids proud, obviously the county proud and everybody else I represent, but I should be able to explain it to my young kids as to why I made that decision, why I took this action. So with me, everything's as well thought out as my mind will let me do, because I ask a lot of questions. Even when we're sitting in these meetings, you know, and they're going along and I'm sure people are like, Andy, stop asking questions. We want to get out of here. If it needs to be asked, I'm going to ask it. And some of those are tough questions and I'm not afraid to do that. So.
And one last question then, and we'll start wrapping up the show and ask you if you want to add anything else. You know, as, as I walk out into the neighborhood, run through the neighborhood and go out to see in the community, I notice a large amount of people your age in these beautiful homes with families and, which, you know, speaks to a lot with what's going on in our community, that they, they're still buying the homes and they're still supporting their families. Your age is right there with this large, it seems like the larger demographic in the county. How do you feel are, how you could connect and represent that age group, this new millennial age group? I'm sorry to throw that term out there.
You know, it's, it is what it is and it is what I am, but yeah, it's got a negative connotation anymore. You know, the truth is, is I, I'm, I'm part of the community. I know a lot of these people. I'm really into technology, love computers, love all that stuff, all these little fancy things on the phone. But I also still understand the, the personal connections, that these Zoom calls are wonderful that, and what we have to do now. But in reality, this sucks. I'd rather be sitting down with you and talking to you and looking at you eye to eye, you know, instead of my eyes going this way at the screen. So I mean, I, I think that we're actually a very lucky generation because we've got to experience, you know, what, what my mom and dad had, had grown up in. A lot of those, those good things and we've got taught from those people, but we're also getting the positives of some of the technology. And believe me, you, you know as well as I, that social media is great, but it's also horrible. And believe me, you know as well as I, that social media is great, but it's also horrible. I mean, it's a double-edged sword. So I think, you know, people, I'm not a rich guy. I live in a house that's twelve hundred square feet with six people and we've got unfinished basement, so it is double that, but it's not a big house. We like living, well, granted, we would love a bigger house to have a little more room sometimes, but my wife and I talked about that. And it's like, well, we're able to keep our family now so close and so tight together because we're in a small, small house like this. So, you know, I'm, like I mentioned, I'm active in the community in many different ways, but baseball, I mean, I manage my son's team every year. This is, this was his last year of Little League, so next year he'll be moving on. And I hope to still coach him. We'll see what happens there if they have a team open. But I think it's just that. It's, you know, showing people that I'm approachable, that I, you know, I'm just a normal, normal person. I, it was funny, I was at Popeyes the other day and this young guy was there. And he was working behind the counter and he was probably sixteen, seventeen, he was in high school. And he goes, oh, you know Andy Bozak? Because I had my mask on. It said, Aunt Bozak. Because I see his signs everywhere. I go, I'm Andy Bozak. He goes, no way. I can't wait to tell people I met you. And I'm thinking, dude, I would have felt the same way at your age, but yeah, like just Andy Bozak, man. It's not, you know, nothing big. So I think it's just people know that, hey, I'm just a normal guy. I got young kids and I'm here to make Porter County better or do my best too. And, you know, I'm not afraid to, to tell people how I feel and I'm not afraid to hear from people how they feel and take those and kind of work together. So, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry to label you a millennial. You could have really come back at me and say, okay, boomer.
I will lose votes.
No, I call myself a boomer. No, I'm a, I, gosh, I'm an eighteen-year-old in a sixty-year-old body and I'm hating it. Andy, I tell you, this is great. Anything else that you want to share with these voters out there that maybe have not voted yet that you would like to have them know about you before they make that decision?
Well, one of the things was, and it's been talked about by other candidates, was back in twenty seventeen, the Caring Place had approached the County Foundation. The County Foundation's the one that's in charge of all the hospital money. It's the seven council members and three commissioners. And that's where the, at the time, it was a hundred and fifty million. Now it's a hundred and seventy-four million, something like that invested. And the Caring Place had approached us and tried to look for money and they were trying to build their new shelter on Bowser Lake Road over there. And we weren't set up to do it. We were taking fifty million dollars and investing it into the county. We were bonding against that. We were doing the twenty million dollar sewer renovations over in South Haven, which I don't know if you've seen it. They're either done or very close because the streetscape looks beautiful. They not only fixed the flooding issues, but they also fixed the curbs, the sidewalks. So a lot of those areas look really, really nice. But there was also thirty million dollars invested in the county buildings, Expo Center, the courthouse, and just upkeeping on some of the things that we hadn't been upkeeping on. So anyways, we weren't able to help them. And it bothered me. It was like, this is a really good group of people. I didn't know about them beforehand, but I learned about them through this. I had met with Debbie Reynolds right after the meeting and Mary Ann and discussed some of these things that they were having problems with. And I was like, what can I do to help? So I came home, my wife and I decided, well, every year we do a Christmas light show and every year it gets a little bit bigger. And the last few years before this meeting, there was people that would leave a few bucks in the mailbox or whatnot. And it is a very expensive thing to do, not only NIPSCO-wise, but to buy all the lights and the computer controllers and all this stuff. So we decided, well, let's start making it bigger, which I was all in for because technology and lights, oh yeah, sign me up. But let's see if we can put a collection box up and donate some money to the Caring Place. And I think that first year we collected seven, eight hundred dollars for them. So it wasn't what they were asking, but it was a little something. The next year it was a little bit more, the next year a little bit more. And we got to this last year and it was right under fifteen hundred dollars. And it was, we're actually able to make an impact by just doing something that we would be doing anyway. We love Christmas. We love having people come by and, I mean, there'll be lines down my block. I live on a corner. And you program, come in, turn your radio station on. So I just like to talk about my Christmas lights because I want more viewers. The more people that come, the better, you know, and it's, in the past, we were able to do a Santa night. And with COVID this year, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to do that because we really overwhelmed the subdivision. It's traffic stopped. No one could get in or out for about fifteen minutes. My stress level went way high. We got through that. So I don't know what's going to happen with COVID this year, but we're still doing the lights. We're still raising money for them. So if you guys are interested, Bozak Family Christmas Light Show, you can find us on Facebook. Check out our videos and come see our show this year. And.
So your way of embodying the Griswold spirit is by making something good out of it, even though you pegged that NIPSCO meter, so to speak.
And if you look at one of the pictures, my cover picture on there, it's got two lines. There's lines on my roof that are coming down. And people ask me, well, what are those lines where there's no snow? And I was like, well, that's when the arches fell and I had to go up there and it was icy as heck. And as I'm fixing them, I'm slowly sliding down and then having to crawl back up. I almost fell off the roof like ten times. So.
Oh, you really embodied the Griswold spirit.
Luckily, it's a one-story.
Oh, well, this is great. So it's really time to start wrapping things up. And for those of you that tuned in, I hope that this is helpful for you and make you know Andy Bozak a little bit more and make a judgment before you enter that polling place and make a decision. And we just want to encourage you, please do vote. It is your right to vote and nothing should stop you. And Andy, we would like to thank you. We're honored that you came on our show and let us know a bit more about you. And one thing that you and Kelly do share something I want to tell our listeners about, you're both from Highland.
Yes.
Yeah, awesome.
When I was younger, before high school, we lived out there and then moved out here because we wanted, my mom wanted better schools for us and more woods to go explore and streams and stuff.
There's plenty of that out here.
I was a great child. And can I ask one thing? Because I know that they tell you to ask this. Please remember to vote for Bozak honor before November third. They always tell me to do the ask. If I don't do the ask, my wife gets mad at me.
Awesome. Well, listen, we appreciate you coming back on and we wish you the best of luck in the election. And so if you'll stick on, we'll just go ahead and close out the show. And we again want to thank you all for tuning in today and listening and, and please, as I'll say it again, please get out there and vote. And we wish you a very safe and enjoyable day and we'll say goodbye for now.
This episode of the Bill and Kelly Show is brought to you by the Committee to Elect Andy Bozak for County Council.
Hello, my name is Andy Bozak and the video you are watching was paid for by the Committee to Elect Andy Bozak. I would like to remind you to please vote for Bozak honor before November third. Thank you.